Jamestown City Council meeting April 20th, 2023 is now called to order. HK, if you'd like this inquiry released.
Father, we just think he was beautiful day you have given to us. This has been a tough week. We've lost loved ones. We've lost public servants. We've lost others that that have served our community so well. We extend our sympathies to their families. Father be with us as we do your business tonight and the business of the people of the city of Jamestown and our community. We thank you for your many blessings you have given to us, give us wisdom and insight as decisions are made for our community and our city. In Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we start, say everybody remember Valerie Baker. Family, been a tough day for everybody and a tough day for her family, a little seven-year-old girl. So let's all remember them. Hope everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting. Everybody's had a chance to go over those. I need permission to approve those.
Motion, please. Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First thing we've got on our agenda is our veterans banners. This is something we've been going back and forth discussing for a little while. And we've been trying to decide whether we were going to try to go work through Russell Springs and try to order through them or if we're going to try to do it ourselves. We think we've got something here that we can do on our own and order from here. A little cheaper price, a little better deal than what we can get. Material is just a little, if anyone wants to look at it. There's the old one on the bottom and then this is the new one.
Sorry about that, sorry picture I brought in bringing.
Here's the new one.
That too.
Yeah.
Not a lot of difference now, just a little bit thinner on the material. But I feel like this would hold up pretty good. For I guess we would probably need to think about, do we want to do a term on them? Kind of like Russell Springs, I think is doing four years. After four years, they're taking them down, replacing them or giving those back to the family and then putting new ones up. Or so that's something we just need to kind of make that decision on. Do we want to go with these, try to take care of these ourselves, vary, think of any more information?
Well, it's just, I don't know how you gauge it. It's 18 gauge or 18 grade fabric. Where she could have been here to explain it itself, but he's got the activities at the high school and middle school going on. He says it's a best grading again as far as however you gauge it. Is it grade or is it gauge?
Mill.
What is it?
Mill.
Yeah, I would do the mill about that.
Mills, okay. But we can get them in the hardwood for a hundred dollars.
Not a lot of difference.
And you know, you can look, that and mine have always stuck for me and surprised me. But it's about three or four years old, kind of like there.
He didn't say that he can work up anything, anything.
Oh, you probably no more. You've talked to him more than I have.
He actually came up like the JTKY, he done, he done this, this one. He said in about 10 minutes, he said, so we can do, if we wanted to change the borders or, well, I like the JTKY on it. But that's, that's me. But he said we, you know, he can come up with something else, you know, as far as a pattern or anything like that to go by too.
And can we just order, do we have to order so many at a time? Or is that limited? If we need to, can we get two room? So I think that's a big plus two.
What's the cost on the other?
A hundred and fifty, I think, is what Russell Springs is charging. But I think you have to have a minimum, don't you?
Minimum.
When the veterans group did it, I don't know.
A minimum of 10 for spring.
Yeah, I believe they're, that's really, you know, so.
But it's, everybody can look at it and see and kind of make it, you know, see what you feel like. But it is $50 cheaper with, with the hardwood.
I like the idea of doing them ourselves and keeping them here and being able to take care of the people that want them down. And then the hundred dollars is cheaper than, you know.
Me and Tony were talking about before we convened, what if one's still good after four years?
Well, I think they're just doing that kind of because they're looking at that as that's four years of what they're going to put them up. Because you're going to have more people eventually.
About to recognize more of them.
You're going to run out of room.
Well, if some people may not want to renew it.
Yeah, because yours has been up there for a whole year. But I mean, it's, I don't see nothing wrong with it.
Now, if you do one in Jamestown, the person you put up, do they have to be from Jamestown?
No, they can be from anywhere. I think it's just the symbol on there.
I know they've got one in Russell Springs, my dad, but I'd like to do one down here.
Janice, Janice Hail.
He's from Webb Scruggs, you know.
No, it would, no, that's.
You know Ricky, you remember Ricky Hail?
Yeah.
Okay, Ricky died, you know, it passed away. And Janice just wanted to do one of him and her father.
Doc.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And but she really wants to get them done, you know, and.
Yeah, she's called me a couple times about it.
I've got a couple more than one. Yeah, one now. I still wrestle with it. So I'll figure out how I can back them up.
And I don't think there's anything that would say that we have to take them down in four years. If we got ready and people's buying them and we got ready to put them up there, then people will leave them, let them leave them. But if we start.
If you don't charge a hundred, I mean, that's $25 a year for them to be up.
Yeah.
I think that's pretty good.
It's a good time, yeah. But I mean, you know, instead of just saying after four years, we got to take all these down, we only have a few banners.
I think that's the reason Russell Springs done it. I'm not sure. But I feel like they done it for the fact that some of them do not look that way. I guess it depends on, I guess, the way that, whether to get them, I don't know. But I know a lot of bears, they're falling apart, they're ripping, actually they're getting really brittle. And I think that it was just a set, okay, they're, on average, they lasted about four years. So I think that's, that's just the number they used. If they finally want something, they can reorder again and we'll put a brand new one up. Or, you know, they can, they can opt out and not do it.
Right.
But I think that's the way their ordinance read because that's, I haven't seen it, but I know they done it. Or it's all veterans banners. So I think that's just, that was just the ordinance they could place in the top three.
But what about the ones that have just bought these kind in the last year or two that, you know, are, which, because they were obviously going to not be the same if we had to go with them and somebody just bought one of these last year. You're not, I mean, does it matter?
Can we not, when we come up, try to hang that in one section and hang something else in the other?
Well, our work, I mean, our work can be done.
Yeah, he can be, he talked like he could match that. He just, he just made one up just to be, and I think he wanted to put the JTKY on it. And I think that, to me, if, if you're going to do it, that may be the way to do it, like keep some of those. We run into a big issue with people wanting them certain places where it gets hard to do. I mean, they, they get mad with us. They're not in one place. They're next to somebody that they didn't like this person. It is crazy what we run into hanging these banners. But you know, if we kept making those together and kind of just phase those out as, as just say a four-year deal and, and everybody goes with these.
That's pretty neat, though.
They look good.
Do a lottery, do a lottery, oh, we are.
Yeah, well, that's what we know. It's what they said. It just went, it was crazy.
That was a bargain.
It was amazing on that.
Was it really somebody didn't want to be next to someone?
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah, it is amazing how many phone calls that we have over the banners. We'll put them up and they have to go move them.
What happened to the bond of the military?
Don't put mine up the next time.
Golly. Maybe the Democrat and Republican.
Y'all want to go ahead and make a decision on that?
I'm making a decision. We go with it.
I'm, yeah, I'll, I'll say it there.
Got a motion about do I, second by Tommy, all in favor? Any opposed? So we're going to go with these banners. We're going to kind of stick with the four years, just kind of.
That's what I think we need to look at maybe by next meeting.
Try to figure out.
Do we want to do an ordinance that, that states that, like, that kind of limits Russell Springs, you know what I'm saying?
I think we need to have something in line that way it keeps any problems from somebody saying, well, we let somebody do this or that. We've got to be in the ordinance, you got to stick by it.
Are you going to charge the same as what they cost us or?
No, just a hundred dollars every year.
Yeah. Trying to look at doing some of that.
It is order. This is kind of a case you have.
What do we need to, how much?
Lottery, really, for the interest, maybe it's quite a, oh, we have to, we have a lottery.
Yeah, or you just stick along and just say, I don't even know.
That's what we're going to do. Okay, so let's work on that. Maybe we'll kind of try to write up some things and get an ordinance on that maybe by next meeting. But we're going to go ahead and go with those.
So is this something we can, we can get ahold of those people and maybe they'll see that you're talking about and the ones I'm talking about. Go ahead and try to get an order in.
I think so. Okay, we're going to try to move things around a little bit just because we've got a couple of things in between you and I. Are you probably going back tonight?
I am, but don't rush on my health.
Yeah, it's okay. There's no reason we can't skip down because it's pretty exciting and I think we didn't get excited here. So this is Ms. Tara.
Good.
Good. And her and Mr. Randy Markham are here with some news about a weather. Well, I'll let you talk about it too because they know, I know a little bit about it, but just enough to be dangerous. So I'll let them tell you all about it.
Sure. So I've got a few slides here that explain the project that Mayor Hinton referenced. First of all, thanks for having me here. I live in Louisville, so I'm not too far from home. And our company is based in Louisville, so this is very much Kentucky homegrown. And we're really excited to be bringing one of these systems to the state. This would be the first one for the state. Judge Markham has been working with my team and I on helping find a site for what we call a municipal gap-filling weather radar partnership. So I'll just walk through that a little bit and I'll try to go quickly because I know we have limited time. But please stop me and ask any questions. There are no silly questions when it comes to weather radar, so I'd love to answer them. I do always start with my team. There are a few others on my team as well. But this is, this is my group that pretty much leads all of our radar operations across the country. But we all live also right near Kentucky, so they're with me every day. Today Riley, who also lives in Louisville, was here checking out the site and potential options for the radar. I have a background in local government, so I spent almost a decade cleaning up natural disasters, responding to natural disasters. Unfortunately, my first one was an E4 tornado where we lost eight kids and one senior adult. So pretty much from that day on, I became very invested in weather and then moved to the dam. And I've sort of merged both worlds now in Climate Vision. And then Emily, she oversees where we site all of our radars and all of the installations. And then Jonathan takes the baton once the radars are installed. So in essence, the partners that we work with don't really have to worry about anything other than just helping us get to the site and might ask some questions about who's the utility, et cetera, in that area. But we try to make this as painless as possible for the partners that we work with. So the main mission of Climate Vision is really to fill gaps in traditional weather surveillance. I'll explain kind of what those look like on this next slide. We are really lucky in the U.S. to have the gold standard of weather radar networks. You may know of them as referenced as NEXRAS. We, I can't remember where the closest one here is, but we have one in Louisville. But even with that big, robust, long-range skin network, we do have a lot of gaps that happen at the lower levels. So that's what the image on the right there demonstrates. Pretty much when you're looking about 4,000 feet and lower in the atmosphere, everything on the right is sparse. This is why you might hear things spinning out, tornadoes that people definitely see coming. It's raining, but the radar says it's not and vice versa. Standing at a sporting event, you're getting caught on, that is indicative of what we would call a weather gap. So not a new problem. Climate Vision is a startup, kind of spun out of a weather radar manufacturer based in Alabama. And the reason for that is that government budgets are obviously shrinking or being reallocated and weather is never going away. We still contend with, especially in the state of Kentucky recently, some pretty extreme weather. So at the time was right for Climate Vision to go and do what we were doing. Additionally, one of, one thing that I, that I think we sometimes don't realize, just in our day-to-day when we read the headlines about tornadoes, there's a lot of signs that shows tornado alley kind of the east. And Kentucky has seen that as well. So where it used to be centralized, you know, around Oklahoma and areas that we would call tornado alley, we're seeing a whole lot of activity to the east of the country. So we, in our first phase of citing all of our radars, we were very much focused on this corner of the country. We'll be putting them all over. We have about 200 radars that we're putting out there across the country, but this is our focus for sure. So a lot of folks say, well, how do you agree with us? And I'll get to kind of like how partnerships works in just a second. But we're able to bring the radar to the communities that we work with, the partners that we work with because we do monetize other forms of data. So we monetize data that comes off the radar and it also feeds some models that we monetize. And then we have additional types of weather models that all the industries that you see here benefit from. So that allows us to underwrite the cost for the former model of getting a weather radar in a gap would be either on the back of the local government or the local government would be lobbying either their state or federal government for funds and typically would not win that argument. So that's how we're able to get a kind of unique public-private partnership solution and it's worth looking, so we're really proud of it. Really quickly, a little more about weather gaps. I mentioned it's not a new problem. It is something that several forecasters, governments, et cetera, have been trying to solve for many years, even trying to use existing radars or maybe change the tilt of the dish, et cetera, just to try to get little incremental improvements. But really, the main barrier to solving this is cost. A typical government weather radar is very expensive. It typically costs about $10 million for them to place the system and all of the associated infrastructure. Our radar, which I'll show you in a minute, is very compact and suited just for gap filling. It's not meant to replace the National Weather Service radars. It's meant to complement and supplement. They're really focusing on that lower level. And really, the image on the left here is what you guys are experiencing. So some people say, well, how do you know where to go to place the weather radars? Well, because we know where every National Weather Service system is, we know exactly the distance between those and where that low level may be exposed. So that's what you see on the left. The further away a particular city, community gets away from the National Weather Service system, the higher the beam is over the head. So that's where a lot of that volatility happens. And I'll show you an example of that in just a second. And this right here in the blue, this is where we sit today. So everything in red is your neighboring National Weather Service systems and they're covered at 4,000 feet below. And in that blue circle right there is where we sit. Now, we have a system live in what we call our Tennessee 34 Gap right now in, I think that was in Sparta. And then we'll, at some point, be placing one just to the north of you guys. And that will actually fill the entire state of Kentucky, so there won't be any more gaps in coverage. So a little bit about the radar and then I'll show you this case study. We are this little baby over here on the left, so, and this is kind of where the partnership comes in. To the far right, this is what you might be used to seeing on television when they're talking about the National Weather Service system. It's a big kind of Cadillac, a big mama of radars, is what Emily and I originally called them. And then over here on the far side, they're the baby. It's got an eight-foot dish and a 12-foot radar. So while it is a big piece of infrastructure, comparatively speaking, it's, it's pretty compact. So that allows us to put it on buildings or water tanks or something that's already standing because it also doesn't rain here as much. It doesn't need as much as a typical National Weather Service system would. And it is a closed, or not closed frequency, a high frequency. So it doesn't interfere with other things like water meter readers, scale equipment, emergency antennas, things like that. So we often co-locate with that type of equipment and that's the kind of thing that only this radar could do. Usually you will see a Seavent radar, so stations will market it, like WLKY has a pretty old one that they sometimes talk about. And then WKYT had one at one point. We're seeing less and less of that one because of cost and too because there's a lot of interference on the frequency that they went on. So some of the benefits we get from this particular radar, in addition to just the gap filling, is this difference that you see on the left and the right. So this is one of our systems that's live in Georgia. On the left, this is what the National Weather Service picked up once it finally picked up that particular tornado that had actually spun out much lower to the ground. You can tell on the left, there's certainly a situation and there's certainly really bad weather. They've got it warned, so they have enough signals to tell them to warn it, which is good. But on the right-hand side, you can look at that pretty clearly if you're an emergency management person in a public safety and say, yeah, that looks a bit like a tornado. Of course, our radars are not meant to have anybody in the public service warn. And that still rests squarely with the National Weather Service folks. But we're doing work with them to go through a data validation cycle whereby they can pull this in and also warn against it. But the next slide is probably a really exciting thing that I love to tell. That exact tornado that I just showed you, like I said, spun up really close to the ground. It was about 900 feet above the ground elevation at that point. And because our gap-filling radar was there, it caught it much earlier than the nearest National Weather Service system spotted. So this would have provided about an 18-minute advance warning. So that's pretty compelling when you think about the power, what one of these radars can do. And that data validation cycle that I mentioned is what the National Weather Service is looking on to try to figure out how to pull that and warn against it. So tornadoes hit the headlines. Typically, an emergency manager or a public safety person, they're going to contend with rain on a more regular occasion. So this particular video will also show you how it's a little bit more useful just kind of on the day-to-day. You can see clear differences in resolution here. But also you can see there was actually a bit overestimation of rain on the National Weather Service system. And ours on the right got a little bit more finite about where the rain was going to go and where the most severe rain was going to end up in that particular community. This was actually during Hurricane Ian when it moves across the country. So that can be really helpful when you're thinking about strategy and where you're going to locate resources and things when they're responding to weather. This is probably the more regular use case, but of course, the tornado scenario is equally important. A little bit about the installation itself. So this is what it looks like basically. We lift everything that you see on the left-hand screen here. We hook it to a crane, we lift it up, we say it's taking flight at that point. And then we put it on top of whatever structure that we've been able to partner on. And then this little cabinet to the right sits down on the ground, on concrete pad with a generator. It is self-enclosed. It's a computer. It's got an air conditioner, air conditioner in it. We operate it remotely, so there's nobody that needs to come on the site every day. It's fairly hands-off. Now, if we had a situation where we needed to come check something or we're doing annual maintenance, we would want to coordinate with our partner in that. But it's pretty compact in terms of the installation. And all of that is stuff that we take care of. It's got lighting protection and aircraft warning lights, so some of the communities that we're with want that assurance. So for us, the best location is a water tank. And we found a really viable location here in Jamestown. The tank that we're living at is about 750,000 gallons and that's a primo tank, in our opinion. But we could normally 150,000 enough we can work with. Like I said, it operates without interference. The install itself is about a 10-day installation. The lift is just one day. That's really the most exciting day out of that and sort of boring because it's a few guys on top and us all on the ground saying, what's going on up there? But we coordinate all of that and before we do anything, we do a structural analysis. So we get the drawings, send those over to the engineers that we work with and they'll give you a signed stamped engineering package so that you have all the insurance you need before we move forward. We get our SDC license, hang that at the site, of course, we hang it at our office. And it's no cost to the community that we work with. So the entire county would be covered by this. And I should add, this radar provides coverage for 16 miles. So it's not just Russell County that would benefit. It would certainly benefit the neighboring areas for just filling the gap. But your public safety folks and your government folks in Jamestown and the entire county would have access to this in real time every day. Just a few pictures of what it looks like. These are some of our installations. We installed two for months, so these are, these are some of the earlier ones, but we could keep updating this, this slide. And then just the folks that we work with, Interpress Electronics Corporation. That's the company that I went on to work for and that now they manage our radar for us. And then TEP, the Power Engineering Professionals, they do a lot of water tank work. And they are a pretty reputable engineering firm based in Raleigh, but with offices all over the country. So they handle all the structurals and stuff like that. And I think this particular tank, if I remember right, uses Caldwell for maintenance provider and they're based in Louisville and we're used to working with them too, so. And then finally, the fun part, data access. So a lot of our partners say, well, how am I going to get this every day? It's really easy. It's just a web URL. So.
It's a bar, please, man, huh?
It's a web URL, just a website. And each person gets their own login, so you know, you guys can access it from home or from work. You can access it on your phone. It's pretty intuitive, but we don't just give it to you and tell you to run. We do a pretty big training with a meteorologist who's also in the MA just to show you how to use it and how you can use it for emergency management or public safety purposes. But it would show you a radar live every day in addition to all of the National Weather Service radars around you in a composite. So you get everything in that one little dashboard. You can scroll in, street level, move them out. All your alerts would be in there too. There's some warning in your area. And then this is kind of some of the ways that the public service or community partners use it. There are a lot of other ways. It doesn't have to be limited to this. And in my capacity, when I was working in public service, I used it mostly for school dismissals and event planning. I didn't, this obviously, but I used weather data for trying to figure out when and how to let kids out. We need to let them out early, we'll keep them later. But you can use it for mobilizing resources. That's a big thing when flooding, when it's flooding season, we need to get people over here because there's rain coming that way. I can think of tons of other case studies and our team would be, you know, happy to help walk through that if we needed to. And that is the end of what I have. So I will pause. I talk fast, so I can get it all in there. But open to questions, comments, feedback.
Can I say something?
Of course, yeah.
So when Emily and Tara first came to see me initially, they sent an email. We started out with an email. And I told her I'm pretty persistent as far as when I see something and I, and I just started the conversation. I said, how quick can you get here? And then so they came the next week. But the thing with the 4,000 feet compared to 900 feet in the early morning, and this is the first one in Kentucky. And they looked at all the water tanks in the county. And Emily said when they passed by it and she said it's a 750,000 gallon tank. And then we checked back and of course it was, but she knew, she said, that's the best because the platform and stuff for them is what you're looking for. But I mean, it was a, it was an old radar for me. It's just like, okay, now how do we get it? You know, and then they came and showed me the same stuff that they were showing.
So it's one for the one tanks?
No, it's the one in the, behind the MS, beside the MS, that's the big one.
Yeah, well, that's what I call them.
The other one's about 500 or something. So I talked to them. Yeah, and they were out there, they were for the site. She said that went well. So I'm like, yeah, we're that much farther from this.
Is this sales interpreting? I mean, I pull it on the website and it says, get the heck out of here, is that there? How do you know what, I mean, I'm used to some people talking about the little curl and things like that, you know, you see on the road channel. So how do you know, how do, as, as an ignorant citizen in the basement, how do I know what I'm seeing?
Yeah, well, there's a couple pieces to it. So the website itself or the login would not be something that would be necessarily self-interference. So it's not intuitive. You do have to have some training to go through it. You do have to have some training to go through it. Um, I think most people are used to saying, you know, yellow, orange, green, red, right? No, red bad. Um, but this, it gets into a little bit more detail, and you can click on different products like velocity and reflectivity. So that's why it would be for the government officials to access.
So we would, we would have somebody who'd be.
Yeah, but emergency management.
I know, alright.
That is, that is storm spotters place, and they had almost a hundred people there. So, you know, there'd be people that would have access to that. So, but what did you say, eighteen minutes?
Yeah, eighteen minutes, yeah.
What's eighteen minutes? Think about, that's a long time to get to safety. And, uh, and we don't, we don't currently have that, so. And the big thing for me, and the business side of me, the first thing I asked her, and I said, how's it paid for, right?
And?
And, they're paying for it. So we're, we're just basically doing the tower with you, so it's a win for us.
So how do you all make money? You sell access to it?
All services.
Yeah, so.
All that?
All services.
I got you. Do you market those entities there that you use?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Media, ad culture.
Gotcha.
Other apps on your phone.
Right, I got you.
So the general public will not be able to access.
But, yeah, the general public wouldn't access, but by having it up and once the National Weather Service completes their work, and it's really at the NOAA federal level. When they get to that point, since the widget will be there, then they would use it to warn the citizens. So the citizens would benefit from it. And like, if a TV station purchased it, they would show it like on a screen using their met interpretation. And chances are they would, I mean, in almost every installation, some TV station has said, hey, that's cool. And it's much cheaper than buying your radar. Um, and so they get pretty jazzed about it too. But yeah, the, the general public wouldn't go on a URL.
So our emergency medical people, our schools, people who have to deal with weather then would have this, and then they would respond and notify people who need to know, like me.
Exactly, yeah.
And it's structured over the range, whatever.
Would those people be paying, paying to speed to access?
No, in your county, they would not. They, so if anybody that you stipulate as needing, as being a responder or being a spotter or something to that effect who needs access to it, they will have the access and the training. And we could do it through like a class, um, if we need to.
Like, we don't have TV stations here, but we do have some radio stations that do a pretty good job with the weather.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you think about it, I mean, this is what got me, like, uh, Louisville or what's the other ones? Uh, when you turn on to listen to the National Weather Service, it's Louisville, Jacksonville, or somewhere, Knoxville, or whatever.
Jackson, Kentucky.
Yeah, it's, you know, there's nothing around us. So there's not any thing from low and green, you know, that we even pick it up, so.
What's the range on this radar?
Sixty, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're exactly right.
Sixty.
Sixty miles, yeah. East direction, yeah. So actually, it's benefiting us to be able to know what's going on more in our area.
Surrounding areas, huh?
Yeah, that's what I mean, instead of seeing what's going on, you know, in your, yeah, Louisville, Jacksonville, so we're going to have access to.
When I sent her the, I sent her the tanks, I sent her the, like, Russell Springs, like, you know. Uh, Gosa Ridge and different places, because it was, you know, for me, it was like trying to figure out whether, you know, does she need a high part in the county or what? But then when they came in and saw the big tank, it was like, oh, it's. So then that's when we stopped. Well, I think I stopped, we saw Tyler first, and then we was talking to Neil, and we started doing.
I think it's pretty awesome if it's something that we could make access and be able to.
Are you asking for a long-term type of lease agreement or?
That's typically a separate lease, um, that obviously guarantees the data back to your team and whoever you stipulate, and then our access to the site. And we, we have a template that we typically will send over. I will say they all sort of shake out differently depending on the community we're working with. Um, so we can send it over and have you guys look at it. Uh, a couple of maybe the key highlights is that if you are, if you get the radar installed, and for some reason you say we don't like it up there, or it's inhibiting operations or whatever, which doesn't ever happen, we wouldn't anticipate that it would, we will come and take it down. And there's some language in there that would protect you guys and ensure that it's not going to be some kind of.
And I'm not suggesting candidacy or the candidacy, common to say, but it is our, we're just going to be donating the site to you all.
Yeah, it's basically on top of the tank.
For the public service.
And for what we get back.
I got you, yes, yes.
Like I said, the first thing for me is how's it getting paid for? And then when we started talking through that, it's like, and, I mean, for me, it's get it for Russell County rather than it's here, Russell Springs, but that's what makes more sense and it's, and, you know, like, it's like middle of county.
My main concern would be getting the information to the, to the schools, board of education, schools.
Yep. If they would have access to that, and I, they would be one of the persons that did the training.
Yes.
They have our radio station, you know.
Well, we do have a community, a community channel, you know, of course. Could, could, huh, no?
It's going away.
Okay.
The YouTube channel's going away.
Okay. Did not know that.
Would it be possible, like, on our Jamestown webpage for it to be
I'd have to.
spun up on it to where it was on it for people to pull up?
That one. Uh, we've never done like a live video feed on a website comment, so I'd have to check and get back to you, but I will ask that question.
Look, maybe your customers didn't hear some information, then we could use those last.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. If they have, if they're excited, they can.
We could tie that to it.
Yeah.
Is that my, I'm going to have on the community's website?
There's probably some visualization compers, or that they use, that they have. I'll say, that's why I lost the note for sure. But I can, I can speak to you if that were to happen. Neil, Dale, what do you want? Anything that you want to, they've actually been out looking to the site.
I, I think the footprint's small. I, I think it's going, I think it goes to the whole community. I think it's, it's no, no brain.
One more question I've got is, I know where dispatch center is right there at that tower, and they did have some stuff up on the tank. I don't, is all of that?
It should not be a problem. So that's, almost in every install, we co-locate with some E911 comms or, uh, some other kind of emergency repeater system or something. Um, totally different frequencies, there shouldn't be a problem, but we can get the specs on those antennas just to triple-check. Uh, I would imagine they're probably similar to some of the others that we have, UHF and VHF antennas.
But my, my main question on that, I guess, is, is there any of their infrastructure that has to be moved to make room for this?
None of us.
You're going to be, want to be on top of the tank in the center of the tank, I said.
So we were talking, we knew Dale was talking about those antennas that was on top of that tower, the tank.
We talked about it.
No, no, they were, yeah, they were, and then it was like somebody who had started a, a business to sell, um.
Uh, so, so, internet service.
Internet service, and it's not a business now, but what they had said before when they were with me is, they'll take those off and mount those if it still works and mount those to their platform. So they all have to take those off.
If they need us to move them, we, we will. We don't always have to be in the center. Um, because this is such a, a big tank, there's a lot more flexibility in the placement. But if it ended up, we did it, then we could absolutely move any antenna. If, if, we, the, the one that's off there has a little bit of extra room on the edges, so we can do that. We want to coordinate with them and make sure.
The installer's little footprints on, they wouldn't have any issues.
So what we would do, like, probably at this point is you would send the information over here for us to look at, per period of what all they're doing, what's involved, and what, um, that we would have the paperwork to look at.
Does that have a comment?
Yeah, okay. I think it's awesome.
Do we need a motion that, to allow them to send the information and whatever legal information we need?
Just if we decide.
If you're going to do it, I would, I would say yes. I would need a motion to put that on the tank. And, and with that, you already said that your engineers would be in touch, and it was, it was stamped, and, I mean. Now, that's my main concern with it. I mean, that's, I'm sure that you're all doing this, and make sure that whatever they're putting up there is not going to compromise our tank because it is our big tank fees counter. So first thing right here. So I, I mean, as far as like, until we're going to make the final decision, I don't think we need a motion to send it.
I think if you could give us that information and, uh, H could look at it and get with maybe Randy, you know, go over stuff together maybe, and we'll all just kind of try to get something going. I'm excited, I think it'd be great to get that information. And for us to make the first one.
The sooner she gets it, the sooner she'll get that.
Right, yeah. First one in the state of Kentucky, I mean, it's pretty awesome, I think. Especially in Jamestown.
My wife said the storm won't get me, my heart will.
Did you say there would be two more in the states?
Uh, one more in Kentucky.
Can you disclose where it's at, do you have yet?
We're, we're looking up in like the Owen County area, so like around stamping ground, um, just really just almost ignore up here.
Directly north of that.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and so that one, a few more complex site challenges there. Not near as many water tanks, so, um, a little bit more complexity in that one, but.
That one is missing a kind of.
So Tommy, I give it in terms of this, there's ten other counties around us that it could have went into, and she's here, so.
And, and we can help you celebrate it. You know, a lot of our partners do some kind of dedication and ribbon cutting, and we think that's awesome, so, um, we, we would love to help with that and be a part of it, so.
Halfway through we thought.
Um, sure, I mean, honestly, the biggest part for us is once we have our lease signed, then we can put it up on the schedule. Now, we install two every month, so right now, I think we're booked through September.
Through Wrigley's?
We're booked through September on installation. We have, um, more flexibility, um, in the fall. Um, Kentucky's good in the fall because the weather doesn't get crazy. So we try to like reserve that time for climates that are not problematic. So, um, you know, October, November is a, is a good time in Kentucky for us to ring one.
But if it's on anything, once you get the lease over, we get, we get you to look at it, and we don't have to have an extra meeting, special call or anything, we can do it, take care of it as it comes.
It normally takes us ninety days to coordinate utilities and stuff, so that's typically what we, we think, but.
Uh, maybe, did you say something about gas?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Tara and see if there's gas there, or propane. We know propane's over the, you know, two or three yards from there, but we would see what access we have to the natural gas. So I, I think that's just a minor question we got.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Is that the natural gas that run the backup generator or?
Yeah.
Well, propane works too. Uh, natural gas is preferred just because it's very reliable, but it's a little household generator. Um, this, this radar is very low-power, so it doesn't need a lot. Um, we just want to there for that and see. Normally, how long is your contract for? Um, typical is like twenty years. Um, so we have a couple, we have one that does like every five years. They do a five-year, an auto five-year, and that goes for a year or something. But that's the starting point, but again, whatever.
I don't remember if it runs out there, but I'm pretty sure it runs around industrial.
I think the E minuses, natural gas over there.
I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure there's main, there's main that runs around.
Yeah, they're not at, it's still new.
I think we had to dig around it for that, for the more.
There is, but I don't know, uh, if you weigh the distance from natural gas, it, I guess it's a cost issue to do that for them.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
It's a little, whatever's cheapest.
Yeah, I know some of them, some natural gas, it has a four-decked this ago.
Right, it's actually on the floor of the unit.
Okay. Oh, yeah, exactly. I think the cord fiber already out there, yeah, so.
Across the street.
We run our cord fiber homes, and they have some good, um, there, so.
Frankie said it's probably a no-brainer for us.
Yeah, I hate to say this, but. Yeah. I mean, I guess, I know what's going through, it's how they pay for it. It's a paper, are we going to pay for this?
Yeah, I don't know. I thought it was going to be expensive.
It might get too late for getting the interview.
I'm in the basement too, don't worry. Well, I, I think this is the, I think this is the integration. At this point, we'll look at everything, you know. We just think it's a great thing. Excited for Jamestown to get something like that. And it was convenient to type in. Eighteen minutes can make a single lot, I think, it's, maybe it's still, I don't know. There's good times, and there's a couple minutes that may make a difference, so. Pretty exciting, I think, to get something like that in Russell County.
And you can kind of see, if you think about it, the only weather that everybody gets is close to a big city and it's up near, near zero, it's big cities, so.
Yeah, and most of these gaps are in areas like that where, um, you might have a retired community or a senior population, and it's hard to, to get out of their way, so.
Do you all know what's kind of like affects our weather though?
Yes.
It makes a real difference.
It does.
Where storms jump over or come through, and it's, it's.
Yeah. They're always a big problem.
Those are around there.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, they're on the deck.
And then with this, you can sit and follow it and watch it, but, you know, so. I think it's awesome to share.
Yeah.
Thank you guys so much for having me. And we appreciate you giving, too, giving information and giving with her and working on.
So like I said.
Yeah, I think so, I think so, yeah. On the very beginning, plus.
Yeah, it's around, I'm going to read.
All right, well, if you'll just give us that information. Sure, we'll get to, uh, work on looking at it and get back with you. Thank you, thank you so much for coming and bringing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've considered.
Absolutely, I'll, no, it's serious, but I'll have, um, my contact information here too, just in case. Okay, of course, um, just. Thank you, thank you. Next thing we have is a municipal road aid contract, contract and resolution. So Tyler has that.
Uh, it's the same, same contract, it's an annual contract, a road aid agreement. Um, next year's, uh, amount is thirty-eight thousand, nine, twenty-two, thirty-four. And it's just like every other year, it's in three payments. Um, to approve that contract, we need to approve the resolution. Uh, so the resolution adopting, approving, the execution of the municipal, municipal aid go-up program contract between the incorporate city and the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Department of Rural and Dispo aid for this year, beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three, right of the Kentucky Revise Statutes and accepting all streets for, to their end as being streets which are part of the incorporated city. We just need a motion to say.
I need a motion? Need a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, the media is a really big thing, something we've been working on for a long time, a long time, and we're finally getting there to the end of it. I think this, from what I understand with talking with Judy at the ad, is this is our final paperwork to get uh everything started on our new water tank. So, uh, everyone, I don't know if everyone's aware that this is gonna go in at uh Cliffy Creek before our old tank is, that's property that the city owns. We checked other areas and it was gonna be rather expensive for places that we checked to try to get another location to lease or to put the tank. And we already have that area, that tank needs to come out anyway, it would have to be taken down, so our plans um with combined is to take the tank down. Put the new one up in that location on property that we already own, so. This is uh what we have tonight, the final step of this is a resolution for the tank for us to be sent in. Then after the resolution, uh HK had to do a letter that he's read all this and looked at everything and is everything looks good for us. And then after we pass the resolution, we have the letter that goes in with the resolution for our final paperwork for the water tower. Now, I don't know when to expect every people funding, but this is the final leg for the funding. And I believe it's eight hundred and eighty-seven, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand that we're looking at getting for the tank, so. Big step, big step, uh, gonna be a big tank, it's gonna have a lot more water than what the other two tanks at Manor Road and Cliffy Creek held together. About uh holes the size thirty and.
This one's a three hundred thousand gallon.
And the ones we had was thirty and fifty or thirty and seventy thousand.
I think manor's fifty.
Yeah, it's fifty and, and fifty's either thirty or twenty, it's a little tank, glass tank, isn't it?
It's a lot more water, have big people's, I would think, will see a whole different. And in their areas, people that's not had.
How, how, how does it get by? Well, that was being torn down.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I'm assuming bypass water.
Okay.
Um, there's, there's other ways around it too, when you shut it, shut the plods off and bring it back in, but the engineers, that's where they're.
One tank will stay online until we get ready to switch over.
So, I'm pretty excited, it's something we've worked on for a long time and needed, uh, we may apply for, to get the money, it's been, what, over, maybe a year ago?
Yeah.
Been a year ago, I guess, and that was our main project that we needed money for, so thankfully, that's what was presented because that's how we got the large sum. It was uh presenting that project that was very expensive, so in a way, we can get that water tank replaced.
Is there a timeframe on how long it would take to tear that one down and put that one up?
He told me when we went and looked at that site, that the whole thing's only probably like, of course, that wasn't tearing one down, but like four to six weeks to put the new one up. So, I said, we met, and he, wasn't it four to six weeks to set one up? He didn't think about tearing it down, did he? No, this was just to put it, move it up, put the fence around it, everything completely.
I'm assuming they'll leave manor and buy, and, and come in bypass water backers and then tear, tear, tear the glass tank down. Build the new three hundred thousand gallon tank, put it online, and then, and then manor's done too.
Is this new tank gonna be like exactly where the one down there is now, or it's not gonna be decided or anything like that? Sounds good.
So, anyway, uh, HK came to get that resolution, or Tyler presented his line.
Resolution, City James Town, accepting the grant, breaking the grant assistance agreement, authorizing the amendment of the City James Town land and budget, and authorizing representative to sign all related documents.
Just the motion passed out. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll get that, uh, with HK, I think, this.
I'm just gonna give Tyler the letter, man.
Already got the letter, he's already approved everything, so all this will go back into Lake Cumberland ad, and that should be all we need. Hopefully, they don't have to be able to reach us from here. That's very good. Okay, so, um, we've already passed on the weather indication. Uh, few little things that I have real quick, uh, first of all, we wanna do a shout out to Trich here. He uh went over to the city park and donated his time at the ballpark to install the new light fixtures, he went over and did that. And just on his own time and didn't charge us anything for that, so we wanna give a big shout out to him, we appreciate that and him doing that for us, so. You all seen, not anywhere, just make sure to thank him for donating his time for that.
We're getting big, big crowds, uh, there wasn't nothing that wasn't in use over there last night.
There's, there's a boys' high school match, dance match over there, not.
Yep.
Parking can get to be an issue too.
It was packed, packed. We have found somebody to uh do some surveying for us as far as uh the land we discussed. Mike King out of Ader County, he's gonna come over probably next week and start working on that. So, possibility of, hopefully of getting that.
Find out about that land, anyway, see where it lays, how much land we're looking at, and actually have some kind of something that we know instead of guessing.
But he said, he said just give him a, a couple of things and get it over next week to start.
Is, would it have the parking over there any right now, if we had a cover then like that down there in that lot where the propane court used to be? Um, you know, you have to come into the, the upper lot or there by the playground to go down into that lot park, and then. People in later games come in and lock in down there, there's no cover down there.
Yeah.
Ballpark road really drive across, go now that way.
Yeah, we ran into that last year, we culled it off the first, well, a couple of weeks last year, those little league games to where we left a, like basically a drive into that, and then they parked all the way around it. But, like, I don't know, it's like everything goes.
Why don't we just put a cover in there?
And let it come in the bottom side. I don't like that, that shouldn't be.
That shouldn't be, you know.
And then we got, we, we actually owned a lot across, um, we just haven't got anything with it yet, uh. Yeah, we, we, we bought the garage, you know, and, and we can own that lot. We, we could probably grab that, you know, we.
Just make a market.
I mean, they could definitely be, there, there's several spots right there, and they just park, you know, just in a U shape or something around it.
Well, I think people still take it in, now, like, over that, that actually put a cover in. Uh, well, for instance, like last year, we had these cows and they were stick, but, so.
It's good ideas.
Let's check twice for it.
I'll make better.
Um, I would think it's just, uh, real quick, uh, Wayne Lynch coming to the bank a couple of times, they, I guess, did uh old boys toys and one that puts on the car show at uh Playfest. And I think, used to, they charged a little bit of a fee, and they got away from it. My shit, I didn't charge anything, he'd ask that they be able to charge ten dollars each for entry fees, just to cover some of the stuff that they had to do. Make expense and stuff for them, so I, which, which I think is fine, but then they also want us to buy the trophies and supply five hundred dollars of prize money. So who should get that ten dollars entry fee? There you go. Yeah, exactly, so, just throwing that out there.
What do they need the ten dollar entry fee for, we're paying for the trophies.
That's just.
Paying the five hundred dollars for prize money.
Only other thing, I'm.
I wouldn't have any problem with.
It's lying on the voice.
I wouldn't have any problem with them charging an entry fee, I mean, uh, concessionaires, you know, they, they charge for their food meter, whatever they're selling, and I. Assume they pass a commission off of their sales or not.
They, they just play a flat rate.
But we don't.
They pay.
Old boys not pay us anything, do they?
No. All I can have to pay is their DJ. Just, he just come and asked me, and I said, I, I, see, I didn't even know, I think we pay that too, though, if you did.
I think we do.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we do, so I don't know, I mean, they can charge it, but I think they ought to give that.
I don't have any problem with them charging it and using it for themselves, if they buy their own trophies, but I don't think they'll charge it, and then they. Pay the trophies, I buy the trophies and give back, I think, or.
Yeah, yeah, none of that.
Who gets it, pay charge, the club? Club?
The club, yeah, yeah. So, what's your thoughts, leave it as it is without fee, or if they want to buy those trophies, they can charge the fee, what, what's your thoughts? I mean, I'm, you know, I'm about to call and let you know, so. Yeah, last year, I paid five hundred dollars cash for the prizes, a hundred dollars to Ron for the DJ, and four hundred and eighty dollars to give Johnson the trophies. There you go.
Thousand bucks.
So we paid that last year, and they charged no fee?
They didn't charge a fee. But they're asking to charge ten dollars for entry fee this year, and they've already asked for the same thing this year for.
What kind of turnout did they have, I know there's a lot of cars, but I don't know a number.
They don't turn it into anything. And don't we have them scheduled to be here if they ask to be back down there, pays again, but too.
Yeah.
Because of the people coming in and the car being right there, I guess.
I think we're gonna put them, didn't we talk about putting them in parking lot this year, not even having them on the street?
Not even any on the side.
I don't, I don't really know that on the street, they, they locked it, I think, because people could walk up and down the street, and it is a disaster.
Come in and, you gotta move them, and, so I think this year, they're just gonna be in the judicial center parking lots down there. And I mean, you know, people still, they'll see them, they're all down, I don't.
I'd say you give him a choice, if he wants to charge, charge a fee, then we, he pays for his trophies and. Fix all of his expenses out of that, and we don't have to give him any other place to put it on. But if he wants us to supply everything we've supplied last year, then there shouldn't be no fees.
Or we, or we should get, if they're worth, if they're worth.
Or pay charge and.
How you know, I don't know.
Pay charge, make it happen.
Well, how many entry fees?
Yeah.
How long have we been paying that? Dollars?
Long time.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's not like we're adding it either, you know, this is something we've always done, you know.
In the past, at one time, it's if they did charge an entry fee, then they quit charging, but we never got it. No, we never got it, I think the car's low, yeah. Okay, so.
And I don't see them breaking even on that, but that's just me. I mean, if they do charge it, I mean, it's probably worth a little money to, I guess, for them to put it on, but I don't, I don't see that, you know, they're, they're about eleven hundred dollars now. Us doing that, I mean, that's several dollars, a ten dollar fee.
I'd say, I'd say there wasn't no, what, thirty, forty last year?
That's what I, 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 I can't remember, but.
So, they're not gonna.
They built, they built this lot down there, and then, what, they ran down twenty on the street.
I don't think that's over forty years, Charlie.
Yeah, so they're not, like I said, they're not gonna write them an estate, they've.
Yeah, I'd say fifty, I'm catching up on it, yeah.
Well, I think if they charge a ten dollars, why can't they use that for their prizes, their prizes as a little to pay for the trophies? They'd be better off to leave it like it is, I mean, I mean, as far as, because if they, if that's up, if they have four cars, that's four hundred dollars, and if we're paying more than that for trophies or.
Well, last year, the trophies were four eighty and then five hundred, so you're looking at, you know, that's over a thousand dollars.
Well, if they charge, then whatever they accumulate, it may be, we can help make up the difference. And it saves us whatever they did. If they get five hundred dollars and, and kick it in on what it costs, then we're out, what, six hundred?
If they're wanting that in advance of what they're, they're wanting ten dollars for their club, for each car.
And you know, it is an event that, uh, I don't know how many people it attracts, but it does attract some people.
There's a lot of people, I mean, they're faithful to it.
Yeah.
Sure are.
I mean, it's, if we've been paying that all the time anyway, it's not costing us anything to let them charge us a small fee for the club.
Yeah.
To help benefit the club, you know.
But they're, they're pretty consistent about having, you know, that amount, that amount of cars, thirty, forty, whatever it is, and uh. It does get a lot of attention actually.
A lot of people looks at it, I mean.
I like, I like, I like. Makes me think back.
I'm more part of the hot rods than I am the red.
Okay, so what do y'all have to tell?
I think Tommy gives her a, the right idea.
You think they want to charge ten dollars, it's up to them.
Yeah. Come let us in, breathe.
It's not gonna cost us any more than it always has anymore.
No.
Wait, what, what broke it?
I tried.
Okay, so, well, everything's as it is, but if they want to charge a ten dollars, it's up to them, gonna be in the judicial center parking lot. Are you good? Speak now for everyone, please.
Good for me.
Okay, one more thing, uh, two more things, actually, uh, just for information. HK has the deeds ready for the property that we're buying off of June and Virginia Grider, so all we have now, the daughter's eighteen, all we have now, those are prepared, is to get them signed and get them recorded.
And how do you all want to do that, we owe them, what, seven thousand dollars, and I guess you split it.
Virginia gets half, and then Philly and Mackenzie gets the other half.
You add four of each, uh, I have two documents, Mackenzie needs to sign an additional document, uh, stating, uh, when her dad died. Because she's here to his apartment, has to go with this deed. The city needs to sign this tonight, it's here, and they got to live with you, and.
Yeah, we're.
Is there a note here in the office, somebody that can know that?
There.
Will they become?
No.
All right, that's fine. Well, then the you and Tyler need to sign.
Peter.
And we've agreed to do this with.
Yes, what about the fees, if we decide to hang on that, there's gonna be fees.
Well, I do not, I just, I kinda thought they probably would ask us to do that, there's about a fifty dollar, the quarter fee or more.
D tax.
And D tax, so we're talking probably a hundred fifty dollars, that'll be going to the county clerk, because it's affidavit, an extra probably fifty dollars. So, did we agree to do that or?
I think we agreed to give them seven thousand, so, yeah, that's for us to do that, yeah, I haven't heard about anything.
Of course, normal is that the seller pays for the tax that has it in the deed prepared, so, you know, it's normal unless you have.
And those are really expensive deeds too, I'll tell you.
There you go.
Tell them Chuck will come up to run that page.
Well, anyway, there it is. Mackenzie needs to sign the affidavit, and Tyler and the mayor need to sign the med.
We've got our part done, you know, what, if somebody else can authorize it, you probably can do it. I can do it, me.
She can authorize.
Oh, you can authorize, okay.
That's good.
All right, well, we can label with you then, you can authorize, so we can sign that.
Now, can you talk about those things?
Yes.
This is up to the mayor, and we met up on the hill, the old, the old people, remember the old water tank? Last fall, there's a little area of land that was owned by the town of Jamestown since nineteen thirty-three, where the old water tank was, I don't remember that. It's right in the backyard of a house that Billy Brummerick lived in in Colley Coffee, but now it's inherited by the Coles heirs, his wife, his widow, and, and the Movers and whatever. They proposed to us, to the city, to deed them that. There's three big old, four big old concrete things there, it's kind of.
Kind of interesting, but.
It's right in the backyard. The city cannot give property away, but there was an easement made, and Brooke Bates was mayor of the city. Across the corner of a cemetery there, which Coles signed over to the city, which lets the city come out, where people dash through there, come and cut across. And there's several lots that was needed to the city for the purposes of ingress and egress across that uh city road there, here it is. Parts of lots, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, it's hard for me to know if it's really just the road that we've all used all these years, and I think it's more than that. I think it goes up into that undergrowth there, uh, to come across, so. So, the way that Trey Orson's been working on this, I could not find the deed is under the name of the town of Jamestown, which was nineteen thirty-three. So Trey found it all, put it all together, and he's prepared this deed for the city to deed the old water tank plat up there behind the house to them, so they can have it. And also, believe it or not, there's an act of easement all the way down to my road there, Shelby Street, that comes up the hill to service that, which as far as I know, has never used. So, this is the deed, the consideration for the deed of that is this easement that was made, or this deed was laid by Coley back in two thousand and ten, actually, is what it was. Now, how they work that, I do not know. So, that would be up to you all, we met up there, and kind of, they wanted to give us land or sell us some land or something, which we determined that maybe that was not in our best interest. The owners outright, am I correct?
Quite a cleanup.
A mess, it's a big mess, and we've got lots of land up there. So, my question, my question, at some point, do we want to execute this deed that's been prepared? I think they kinda thought we were gonna do it, but I mean, that's up to you all, your bosses.
Well, that day up there, I think that's what their understanding was.
And we don't need it, it's just, we're nothing we can do with it. Nothing we can do with it.
It's just a little square in his backyard, so...
Yeah.
About a third of the size of this, well, maybe, maybe the size of this, not half of this deed, maybe half the size of this room.
So, we can just swap?
We're just swapping, we're swapping these lots behind the house there for a deed to that property up there. And they're doing really, I mean, it's good, they're really cleaning that place up, it's, uh, gonna be nice.
Do we need a motion on it?
Yeah, we do, a motion to let the mayor sign the deed. Tyler, would you make a motion?
I'm just trying to... There's two service lines running through there, uh, you remember? I can't, I can't remember, I feel like there's two service lines running through there, but they go into that, they go to those places anyway, so I don't guess that would...
I mean, they go to the water tank?
No, no, they're actual water meters that run up through them.
Oh, okay.
But where, where you're talking about that easement, as long as it doesn't affect that...
It can.
But what, I mean, even if it did, it's, they're, they're laying that anyway, so...
Yeah, but we still, so we would still have rights, we would still have the right to use whatever we've been doing.
And that's, it's just services that were run up, um...
But it does clean that hill up there, but here's a flat. It's really odd, I have no idea, it's point oh, it's fifty-seven hundredths of an acre, not even, it's not a half acre, it's a fraction of a half acre. Twenty-five hundred square feet is all that is.
The square, you give them?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Just a, just a...
That a man...
As long as they're making the tenant calls anything to the, uh...
That a man?
Lines.
No, this is, this is coming up another way anyway, air services, yeah.
So, if that's agreeable, I would ask the mayor to sign this, and Tyler to sign it. I would turn it back in over to Trey, and he can have the coffees excited, and then we'll do it.
So, you do need a motion?
Yes.
Need a motion to be able to sign this?
I'll make the motion.
And you say, okay, all in favor, any opposed?
And they're excited about the mayor.
I want to mentor.
They're excited about the neighborhood, they're approving it, it's gonna be moving up, it's pretty cool up there.
He was doing a lot of work for them, he was doing it.
Yeah. Marbury's would have arrived.
And Anne, she's kind of a...
Very smart.
She is.
They love Jameson, uh, concrete pillars there, that tank is set up on here and do anything there.
Jeff, you got anything, anything going on that you wanna talk about?
Um, tough week for emergency services, with the dispatcher, we also lost a gentleman that worked with the Justice Center that passed away, Mr. Renter. Um, court security, so pretty tough week, tough day today for the services. Um, just a quick update on our laptops, we have those in. Uh, that's the reason I missed last council meeting, I was all day with the fellows putting in the modems. I think we got our first bill today, but, um, we're all in with the exception of my friends, I don't have any laptop in mind yet, I'm, but everything else has theirs. We're using those a lot more cleaner on the paperwork. Um, so, we took a huge step, the next step is hopefully getting that open box, and that's, uh, got back, we're just loaded up with other stuff going on, but get started on that as soon as I can, but, so, we're catching up.
Everybody that's got them knows how to use what they've got already, and...
Yes, uh, the only ones that'll have to have a severe class will be me. I guess, I've already got just a little bit of that class from one of the younger people, but, uh, yes, it'll be difficult for me to get used to that, uh, because we've basically done it the same way since I started here in ninety-seven. So, we have those, uh, I, I can break those maybe and show you the difference the next meeting, so you can see what a handwritten compared to what that is, it's amazing. And we were having to take those copies and distribute them to the Florida cops, we don't do any of that now. We just hit that button and transmit it everywhere we need to go, so it's just, uh, put us in line with everyone else, so we're... And actually, we have better computers, Russell Springs at the top of the line. Uh, the computers that we got are gonna be the computers they get the next time when they do an upgrade. The printers that we got are the printers we're gonna get for the next, when they do an upgrade, so top of the line, so... Call us up quickly. So, thank you all. If you want to say the deal's in good... Frank, do you need it?
No, uh, I can do that, thank you.
Virginia's been talked to by different ones, and I've been talked to by different ones.
It's been the same one that's talked to me.
I've been talked to by people even before I was alive.
You didn't talk to anybody?
I ain't talked to much of them, back years ago, when I thought about running in. It's, um, with us being a tourist community, and most of your other tourist communities, whether it's here in the state of Kentucky, or whether it's in Tennessee or Virginia, West Virginia, wherever, they let, I mean, I know we have ordinance on golf carts. To me, the golf cart's a whole lot more dangerous than a side-by-side is. Side-by-side can get out of the way, they have headlights, they've got taillights. The package to put turn signals on, I think it's about a hundred bucks, if it's plugged in. I mean, it's, but by the state standards, I'd give all of you the state law, the KRS. We, as a local government, can, I guess we have to, the way I read it with my right, HK, it's in seven C, we would ask, ask the transportation department to let us, but we could approve for them to be on any city streets or in the city limits, because the city limits is our...
Of course, they go by the green now.
Yes, it does. With the new register going in, I think you'd see a lot of traffic from down toward the marina, because there's a lot of people down in there that have, that they would love to be able to just come out, jump on it, and they could ride up here to town in the open air during the summer, come to eat, visit their shops, so forth and so on. I just think it's something we need to look at. Uh, I know Tyler and me have talked about the golf carts, and I think you're all, inspection stuff's even expired, the tailgate or something. I don't know what it would take, I'm sure HK would know or could look into it. I just feel like it's something we either need to take the golf cart thing completely out...
I just bought one.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, me too.
Uh, yeah.
Or we need to buck it up and beef it up a little bit. Um, it's like with me, I'm in the city limits, but by the way, the old ordinance reads, I can't even take my golf cart out, because it changes to above thirty mile per hour before you get to the dollar store.
The KRS that we passed that ordinance under, uh, it's stipulated it's thirty-five miles an hour. That's right. That was as high as, we couldn't put it on a forty-five or fifty-five mile road.
This is the latest one, this is the newest. The way I understand that is, all you have to do is, they, we do it, they have to... I think when you read through it, that person has to be at least sixteen, have a valid driver's license, best to have seat belts, headlights, taillights. It doesn't necessarily have to have turn signals or a horn, it gives you a list of stuff in there.
It'd be insured, it'd have to be insured.
It doesn't say it in here.
Subsection C says the transportation cabinet doesn't make, and the city of the county government may just make, public highways, segments of public highways, joint rival ways of public highways under jurisdiction for all trade vehicles that are purported to be main operator. So, it's like it's a little wide open there, but...
Yeah, I think it's a little different than what it was back when y'all passed the golf cart.
Yeah, it was limited to a maximum of thirty-five miles an hour back then, and...
Of course, you didn't have much it would run at the thirty-five back then either.
Well, what's that on, it says that the person has to be sixteen, but right above that, sentence A says, a parent or legal guardian of a minor who's under the age of six shall not allow...
That's a pretty thing, yeah. Actually, anybody that's under sixteen is not even supposed to operate one on a farm.
But this is just saying underage six, so a seven-year-old could...
No, says you have to have a driver's license in order to put it on a drive.
And why's it say that?
Whether it's for farm, if it's on the farm.
That's where, that's where you let your child sit in your lap, in my opinion, right?
Or like, if you're an adult's in there, let a child drive it, I hate to see a seven-year-old drive one.
I would too. I don't wanna see a seven-year-old.
Well, sixteen says the person under the age of sixteen, when operating or riding as a passenger on an operating vehicle shall wear a certain headgear. So, I mean, it's saying right there, the person under age of sixteen when operating, at least.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's kinda, it's telling you in a way, that way to be sixteen.
We need to be talking that matter up there.
If you're under that, says, if you're under age of six...
What about the insurance thing?
Then it's saying you're open, like...
Insurance, I get, I don't know.
Can we just speak, just to tell you what I'm doing?
Yes, yes.
Well, if we had a place like where someone would go and ride, like these trails, and you're one of those people, like, the place, the place in Tennessee that does that, I would say, yes, we don't have that. And I just feel that this is a recipe for disaster, I mean, but, I mean, that's my opinion, I mean... I think the whole state should legalize it, if that's the case. I know other states, if you go to Tennessee, you're riding around, you're getting on a bird, like crazy, but they have tags on them, they're having to be tagged, like a vehicle or a motorcycle.
An insurance, or goes, get it through blood, and somebody's...
I mean, I think you could, HK, you could probably even write that into your order.
Well, they have to have insurance.
I would assume if they're getting a tag, they have to...
It has to, they gotta be equipped with like the car as far as insurance and licensing and all that, question is...
Of course, in here, it says, it tells you they can't need licenses for the road, but you can approve it for that.
That's true. Yeah, but if you approve them for the roads, you know, then there's a vehicle on the road that could potentially play all your, somebody from savings bins, and it'd be uninsured, and there's this guy.
Let's not talk about that part.
I was just asked by different ones over time, if I ever bring it up, so I pulled up the KRS, and I gave everybody a copy of the KRS, and I brought this.
We looked into this once, we did, and, um...
Did we look into it, though, at, this is restricted effect, not your hack, no.
And now it's...
I'd say it's somebody's, uh, department, I can see why, I needed it, I agreed.
I mean, June twenty-one, what's it?
I just wondered if there's somebody there that can go, or if we can get a hold of...
I don't think we've considered it since, uh, June twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm like Mitchell, I'd like for HK to look into it.
Sure. The, the previous KRS, it actually specifically excluded anything but golf carts, it didn't, that's exactly right. It excluded anything.
I would prefer that we excluded sports, just your regular four, if it's a one or two fashion, because I don't think they've got any business on to that. You know, but the side-by-side, as long as they're obeying the speed limit and such as that, I'm...
Well, they're not, they're kinda like G-Funk, they're...
Yeah.
I mean, they're small.
Well, it's the same difference as the slingshots that Polaris puts out, and they do license them for the road. And they're just the three-wheel side-bys, what they are. They're no different than...
I don't like that word, slingshot.
Well, I, the reason I don't want to head forward, it's like...
It's not like somebody going over Indian Canyon.
I think the states isn't out, I mean, personally, you go, like, you go to other states, you've seen them, you have the bird, you see them everywhere, but they're licensed, I'm sure they're...
Well, I always have to be licensed, too.
They require insurance.
I don't think you get licensed.
Like you can license them, actually.
You can't license them in the state, you think?
You can't license a, uh, side-by-side?
No. I think even Ohio has that, we've run into that issue where, uh, we catch them on the road, and those folks will have licenses on them, but they have a type of loud blinks on them, and...
They may have them from twenty-two.
We seem to be bordered by every state that has legalized those, Kentucky hasn't legalized them yet.
It's like in Florida, where my mother lives, they license the golf carts. Well, everybody she knows down there, she's about to worry me to death with my golf cart, I'm like, you've lost your mother's mind, now you're hitting my golf cart. But they license them, you pull into Walmart, and there's almost as many golf carts at Walmart as what there is cars. I dropped them all over.
And this is kinda confusing, you're like, if you said this, it's a real, it's a state, it's a... I don't know if it's an operator, it's a state, it's about, if you say it's a joint, I don't know.
I'm like you, it is, there needs to be some type of, and that's working on...